I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, October 18th at 6:00 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Teresa A. Moss, you're present.
Chaz Sexton, you're in, you're present.
And Veronica Cal, present. And because I am remote, all of our votes today will be roll call votes. So just so people are aware of that. All right. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The meeting is being recorded via Zoom and will be on the town's YouTube channel. After the fact, it is also live on Channel 9. Moving on to 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions. I have some deletions for today. I would like to delete 2.1 and 4.1. Those will both be moved to right now, the target is November 1st. I'm sure that 2.1 will be November 1st. 4.1 will depend on when we get definitives from town properties. Public comment period. Oh, one other. For the minutes under 1.6, we will not be reviewing 6/21/2022 minutes. Those will also be moved to November 1st. So, thank you. Anybody else have any other additions or deletions? No?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Public comment period. Is there any public comment? I don't know if there's anybody in the room there, is there?
I have a public question.
This is the time for it, Andrea. What is your question? I don't
What's the status of the 21 audit?
Oh, Eric, would you like to comment? I sent the audit report to the Audit Committee for FY21. I didn't send it to the FinCom. Maybe I should have.
Yes, so, no, I apologize. We did get the, we did receive the 21 audit. It wasn't actually that long ago, it was right before
I sent it just last week.
Yeah, we just, we just received it. So I'll send that out to Don for the FinCom's review, you know, information as well.
However, Can I just state that Don has it? I sent it to him and Dave Chanel because the three of us are the Audit Committee. Don responded to me. I asked if anybody had any questions. Don didn't respond. This was maybe Thursday last week. And Dave Chanel did. He said he had, I asked if there was any reason that we all needed to meet and he didn't feel there was. I don't feel that there is. But anyway, go ahead, Eric, sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no, the one other piece to note is that Melanson is performing a single audit for the town because of the amount of federal funds that were expended in FY 21. So that's required when the town spends more than $750,000 in federal funds. There is a requirement for a single audit, which was in the agreement with, between Melanson and the town. It's an additional cost, but we have to do it. It's a federal requirement. So they are performing that right now. But the general audit is already completed and
So the the audit is in the contract, but we still have to pay extra for
Yeah, because you don't know whether or not you're going to need it until this accountant certifies how much federal funds are expended each year.
So in the federal fund has a limit and we went over above that.
Of $750,000. So that in our, in our new contract with who's the new auditor?
Roselli.
With Roselli, there's a similar clause. It says that if a single audit is required, it will be an extra $3,000.
And it's a single audit just for the federal funds?
Yes.
And how much is that?
It was, Melanson's fee was $3,500. So that is not complete, but the general audit, as has been mentioned, is complete and
Madam Chair, I forgot, I did have an addition.
Well, let me finish the public comment period and we'll come back to that then, Teresa. So Andrea, does that answer your question?
Yes, but I have another one.
Okay, there's going to be a limit of three. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, I can, I can do it in two. You have, you've been talking about a special town meeting on the 18th of December. Has, have the books been reconciled? From '23? No?
No, the FY22 books have not, are not completed.
Oh, are we close?
I certainly hope so. I had a conversation with both the accountant and the treasurer today to, you know, remind them that we are planning a special town meeting for December 13th and we do need to have the free cash certified by that time. My understanding from speaking to the accountant, who has, does work with other towns, is that the state is turning around free cash certifications quickly within, you know, less than a week. So we do have time, obviously, since we're, you know, a little bit less than two months out from our special town meeting. But they aren't, it is not done yet and, you know, it needs to get done. So I reminded them firmly that that needed to happen.
Thank you.
All right, is that it, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? All right, so then we are going to go back to 1.4. Teresa, what addition or deletion did you have?
I'd like to add an addition, allow to discuss about a proclamation on the Town Home Page with Veterans Day. I'm willing to write it up and then have the Board of Selectmen see if they like it.
Can we, can we move that to the 11-1 meeting?
But I can write something out. Yeah, I'll write it up and send it to
We can put it on the agenda.
And we'll put it on the agenda for a vote on the on the first, yeah. And that'll be plenty of time for Veterans.
Like this.
Yeah. Okay, so let me just write that down so I remember to add it. Veterans Day proclamation.
That's the word I was looking for and couldn't come up with.
Okay, all right, to be posted on website. And you'll be home before correct, you'll be before the, before Veterans Day, right? Yes.
Veterans Day is the 11th, right?
Yes, I will be home on the 7th.
So in case anything would need to be fine tuned. All right. All right, anything else before we move on to 1.6? All right, so 1.6 is to review the meeting minutes for 4/13/2022 and 6/7/2022. So is there a motion for 4/13?
Make a motion that we review and approve the meeting minutes for 4/13/2022.
No second to that?
All right, are there any comments on that? Any changes that need to be made?
I got nothing, Madam Chair.
I do not have. I'm outside.
All right, so the motion is to approve the meeting minutes for 4/13/2022. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chaz Sexton, you're in, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, and for the 6/7/2022 minutes?
Make a motion that we review and approve the meeting minutes for 6/7/2022.
No second to that?
Are there any comments? I do have one comment. But I'll go to you guys first.
There was something and now I forgot.
Do you want to come back and put these on the first then?
Yes.
Okay, I want, I have a question.
Unless you had a change.
No, I'm good with moving it to the first. My, my reason for this is I am wondering, so the minutes are seven pages and this may be something that we can talk about offline. I know that we're using a transcription program now, correct? For the minutes?
No.
I'm wondering if there is a way to make the minutes more concise. Still use that program and then
I don't believe Sabrina's using that program.
Oh, she's not?
No.
Okay.
But we can certainly have a conversation offline about
That, and then come back to these. Is that all right? Teresa and Chaz, are you both okay with that?
I'm okay with that, Madam Chair.
Yes, because there's a couple of things that I remembered what I needed to do and it was grammatical.
Okay.
We want to just kick it off to 11-1.
To 11-1.
All right, we'll move that one to 11-1, so no, no vote taken.
Yeah.
Okay, and so both of these go to 11-1. All right. Thank you very much. We have deleted 2.1, the annual meeting with TCAM. And I've asked that they have, that we've moved it to 11-1 so that everybody can be present. And I've asked that they get the report, the annual report to us by, I think I said the 27th. So be on the lookout for that when it comes in, is all. All right, 3.1. Is there a motion to appoint John Corwin as the Council on Aging Part-Time Van Driver? With the normal contingencies?
I'll make a motion that we appoint John Corwin as Council of Aging Part-Time Van Driver.
And is there a second?
Well, we need, do we need the background checks, training and six-month probationary period to that?
Well, yes, we do, but I thought we were not going to put that in our motions anymore because those are standard things that are required by personnel policies and procedures and contracts. Did I, did I hear that right from several meetings? So we were just going to make appointments. Okay, so, thank you. Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chaz Sexton, you're in, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So welcome, John. And our second appointment is for a firefighter. So is there a motion?
The motion that we appoint Dan Costner as an on-call firefighter.
No second to that?
All right, any further discussion on that? And the appointment letter does mention the fiscal and the Cory background check, et cetera, et cetera. So for the firefighter. Any other discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chaz Sexton, you're in, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, thank you very much and welcome, Dan. All right, moving on to 4.2. The North Middlesex Regional School District Budget Summit was held yesterday, I believe. And Eric and Chaz and I believe Don Hayes from FinCom were to be in attendance.
That's correct. Don couldn't make it, but Chaz and I were both there.
So is there anything to report?
No, nothing, nothing at all. Just the same old.
Yeah, business as usual.
I'll start it off.
Sure, no, absolutely.
The forum, I liked the, the idea behind what they were trying to do. As you both know, I really am very much into the collaboration and the more, more the boards are talking with each other, the better the, the outcome will be. Each town was represented with the town administrator, a select board member and a finance committee, except for Ashby. She looks like she's flying solo over there, kind of wearing all the hats. I'm very familiar with that feeling. But we, we did Brad had presented a I guess it was more of a forecast on what they're looking for, for their budget. It wasn't really numbers. It was things that they're looking into, things that they're trying to prepare for, things that they foresee coming up in the near future and kind of given us a roadmap of, of what they are looking at for their budget. And then each town was asked to present their, their side of the story. So we gave them numbers and then I'll let Eric speak to, to how Townsend fit into the mix.
Yeah, so each town administrator did do a presentation of their own towns fiscal picture and challenges for FY24, so and we all did it in a different way. It wasn't kind of a, a uniform response. So Pepperell did theirs and they seem to be in a fiscal situation that would allow, it appears that they might be able to allow us absorb a small increase in the school budget and still stay kind of positive in there for their budgeting for FY24. I spent some time before the 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 meeting yesterday, doing a very, very, very quick, well, a very kind of preliminary review of our budget for next year that included, you know, some assumptions that I think we all know are real. I, I went through and put in all the as much as I could assume as to the contracted increases in salary that we've already committed to. I tried to accurately reflect some cost increases that we know are going to come. So for instance, is the energy costs and all of the lines. There's no point in flat funding those. We already know that, you know, we were double energy costs in the facilities budget last year. And so I tried to accurately reflect some energy costs. Most other costs, I tried to keep level funded. With those assumptions, I built in a potential 2% increase for the schools. And again, very preliminary, using assumptions from last year's budget because we don't have the numbers for this year's budget for things like revenue and the cherry sheet estimates. We were with a 2% increase from the schools. We're looking at a deficit of about $400,000 in our budget for FY24. And I want to make it clear that these numbers are very, very, very preliminary and they don't include some things that I know are going to be increased, like health insurance costs, pension costs. And it's, so it's too early to use this as a kind of a a guide to what we're going to see in the spring. But I do think it's important to note that, that even with a flat funded, a level funded schools, which I don't, I don't, doesn't sound like it's realistic based on the schools conversation, but even with a, a level funded school, we are going to be at the point where it's still going to be struggling to make, to bring in a balanced budget. So that, I think that's something that I think it's important for everybody to hear and understand. Each 1% increase in the school budget equals about $140,000 to Townsend. There was a reduction in school population from Townsend, so it's not clear how that's going to affect our end of the year number assessment. You know, our assessment may, may in fact go down. And so that, there may be some, some, that may create additional room. But that, that's not, it's not clear how that's going to work out with because the schools are also operating on year-old data. And they don't have to up to, up to the kind of minute data that they would need to know the exact set. Obviously, this is, we are at the very beginning of the budgeting process, very, very, very preliminary. And so we'll be looking as we move forward over the next few months to, to try to see how accurate this, this snapshot is. But I think it was good for the schools to hear very early in their process where Townsend stands. Or where Townsend thinks it's going to stand. The news from Ashby was quite frankly, even more bleak than the news from Townsend. They're, they're suffering from some real kind of infrastructure problems and staffing problems to go along with their budgetary problems. And they, I think, the thing she mentioned, you know, that they're going to have to do something about that elementary school. The town of Ashby overwhelmingly wants to keep their elementary school and overwhelmingly doesn't want a tax increase to do it, which is not really realistic, but that's the, you know, that's the things that she's struggling with. And I think she was talking about potentially going for a debt exclusion to try to get the work done on the elementary school that needs to get done. Interestingly, I think the, one of the things that I thought would be interesting for the folks to know is that on the school department's radar was a rehabbing of Hawthorne Brook, which I really didn't have on my kind of radar as infrastructure that the school is going to, you know, need of their property they own. So they are, they did have Hawthorne Brook as a capital project in their potential, you know, I guess their future plan. You're muted, Veronica.
When you say rehabbed, what do you mean?
They were not really specific about it. I mean, I think they were talking about how the science and kind of the technology in Hawthorne Brook is not up to par for the district. Certainly not up to par with the Nissitisit and the high school, which is, the Nissitisit especially is where the other cohort of middle schoolers are coming from that are populating the high school. And so, you know, I think that was the you know, they, they just called it a potential Hawthorne Brook middle school project. But it did seem to be talking about, you know, upgrading the technology and the science offerings at the little school.
So I have a question on that. Since they quote unquote own that building, how, how does that work? Shouldn't that be, that should not be the responsibility of just Townsend, is that correct?
That would be correct. That would be a, that would be a district-wide
Spread the wealth sort of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry to interrupt.
On what they were looking at? You know, 5, 6, 3, 4.
They didn't give us any kind of numbers like that. They, they were not.
Well, the, I think the positives that I took out of it is number one, there is a decrease in Townsend as far as the and it was a substantial first, for their numbers. It was a substantial number, approximately negative 3% reduction in the amount of students. Pepperell, on the other hand, had an increase of about the same size, but with the presentation from Pepperell, it looks like they, they would be able to cushion, you know, some, some of that with, with their budget.
But we're not sure that, of that, of that, of that decrease on, on the final of this at this point.
Correct. It's, it, from, from my, my interpretation of the information was that, which I questioned last year in regards to the budget. It looks like the increase, the majority of the increases are teachers. They need more teachers. They need more special ed is a huge thing. Transportation for special ed is another huge thing. There are also some human services supports that they're going to need in regards to a lot of issues that haven't been addressed because of COVID that are perpetuating itself. Which on, on the one hand is understandable, but on the other hand, they are expensive. There was expensive, yeah, adding teachers and then adding the, the insurances and all of that kind of stuff. It is kind of pricey. So I think that they have, they, they definitely need to sharpen their pencils when they start putting some numbers down. But in, in the whole, what I see is that we are, we have presented what we think where our position is going into the game so that there is an expectation from what I saw that there's not going to be a lot of, of increase. So if, if they're going 5%, we definitely are not going to be able to fall into that. So I just feel that where we're at right now is at a place where we can start and really start crunching numbers because that's what we're going to have to do. If, if there is any talk of, of any other alternatives like overrides, it would be because of the school budget and not because of anything that we've done here in town. I'll be very clear about that.
Wasn't there, this is the second or third year in a row this was a decrease in Townsend?
Third year.
Third year.
Yeah.
Um, I know I'm being simplistic, but I've been on the board before school committee and so forth. Wouldn't there with the decrease? I know you'd see in the increase of Pepperell, but where is there a need for additional teachers coming if we have decreased numbers of students?
I think, so the way that they explained it is, and if you're on the school board, you might be aware of this. There's a policy in the district that once a classroom has more than 25 students.
27, but they've probably changed.
It has to have a second, a parent needs to be in that classroom. And so I think it sounded like they were looking across the district and there appeared to be some situations where they're running into that numbers game, which is, you know, there's a elementary school class in Ashby that has more than 25 students, so they need to hire a pair to be in line with, with district policy.
And there's also the, it's time to meet to catch you off. There's also a concern that there's not enough in the market to be able to cover the actual need for the school. So that's another thing too, which then translates into the salary portion of it in order to attract people for those, whether it be paraprofessionals or the professionals themselves. They're probably going to have to have higher run offerings. So I mean, it's a catch 22 situation, you know, in that respect.
I'm hopeful that, because we're, we have four of these scheduled, one every month leading up to their budget, which is I think in February. And so my hope would be in our next, our next meeting in November, they'll have chewed on what the towns have presented to them and provide us with some kind of meaningful feedback. I'm not sure there's anything else we can give them other than that. As we move through our budget process, we'll try to hone our numbers and keep, keep them apprised as to where we are with our numbers, but I think they have our outlook. And so, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
When do we get the cherry sheets? Like when will we have the state numbers?
So
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some preliminary, very preliminary cherry sheet numbers in theory in January or February. But because this is a new administration, regardless of who gets elected, there's a new administration. It's likely to get put off. Every time there's a new governor, that governor's budget comes late in that year. And, and so there's not, there's, there's no governor working on the budget now because neither, there's not somebody in office. So we are likely to be looking at a cherry sheet estimate very, very late. We're going to have to operate for the, for the majority of our budget process on last year's numbers.
We used to always work off that point, Mary, because we've always thought the government was pretty lazy and now, okay, yeah, whatever it said. That's what you get. And for like three or four years, it almost matched up exactly, but then it stopped during that.
So I have a couple of questions. For the past couple of years, the school committee has come to the Board of Selectmen in November, no later than early December, and presented budget to the selectmen. Are these budgets summits in lieu of that process?
That's a question that we can ask.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious. And then the next one, this one's for you, Eric. Were you able to use the software at all that we got with the Community Compact? The ClearView or whatever?
No, that's, we're not, but I will have an update on that, but they were not at the point now where, yet where I could use.
Where you could use it for the, I was just curious if that was Where you could use it for the, I was just curious if that was helpful at all.
Me and Excel, you know, trying to figure out how to populate cells. It was fun.
Okay. All right. Um, when you said the Pepperell could absorb a small increase, can, are you able to, um. Tell us what that percent was?
Well, I, I think, I think.
Or what's it, non-specific?
No, Andrew ran two, ran two scenarios. But he didn't do it the same way that I did.
Right.
So this scenario is basically said. If the school has a two-point-five percent increase, this is the percentage of budget increase that would be left for. Pepperell without saying whether or not his budget would fit into that percentage.
Right.
It's like, I mean, Pepperell has two percent of our budget left of an increase. I don't know, it doesn't, he didn't speak to what his costs were. So that might still be a deficit. But he did say with one percent, and you could see in his numbers, he was talking about that would, you know, that, so, so it, it appears as though. If his numbers are similar to what our, our numbers are, which I, I, I would imagine they're relatively similar. Unless he's got some crazy collective bargaining agreements. You know, a two-point-five or three percent increase in his budget should be able to absorb the increases in his budget. So he, 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 at one percent, I think, had, you know, three, three, ha- three and a half percent. Increase that in Pepperell's budget would be if the, if the, if the schools only went up one percent. He didn't, didn't get down into the nitty gritty, but, um. But yeah, I, I would get, that's why I'm just guessing that it, that it's a, there's a small increase in the school budget that Pepperell could absorb without any kind of override.
Okay, um, my, my other question is, have we heard from Nishoba Valley at all? Because they also play into the school budget for our town. Um, are they doing something similar to this? Have we heard at all?
I haven't heard anything from Nishoba Valley. Um, and I could reach out to them, obviously. I think anybody who's looked at our budget understands they're way smaller.
They are.
They're way smaller, a part of it, of, of that hundred and tw- for each one percent, I said it's a hundred and forty thousand. Of that, a hundred and twenty thousand is this, is the regional school and about twenty thousand is, is the.
Technical.
The valley. So, but I can certainly reach out to them and see if they're going through the same process. We have a, as you know, on their, on staff, we have an in. Onto the Nishoba Valley School Committee, so we can get Harrison to spy on them and, and give us back all their, all their salacious details of their budgeting process.
Do you ever do a, for a student like you? Nishoba Valley is significantly not enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, that is a, a good point. I, I think it's important for us to reach out to them too and see if they're. Try the same kind of sharing.
A large increase from them last year over the prior year. And, and so that does, it's not, certainly it's not as large as the regional school district, but it does play into our total budget. So, um, all right, anything else on this before we go on? All right. Okay, the next one is, uh, four-point-three. Um, I wanted us to start the, oh, before I go on to that. I would like, it, it would be, you can tell me if this is realistic. If in fact, we think we are going to need to, um, have an override vote. Um, in order to meet budget this year. I think that we want to start preparing people and presenting the reasons. Around special town meeting. And I think the school district and our school committee needs to be a part of that process. Because it is our town budget, the total budget for the town is both. What we do for services for the people in town and, and it includes the schools as well. So I, I just think we need to start talking about that sooner rather than later. Um. On the other, the place in is the trash contract, but special town meeting is when I would like to start that. Conversation.
I think that's the expectation that we gave to the. The, the school folks, the school administration folks on the call was that, you know, if there's. You know, if, if we have to work towards a, an override, if it's not, if that's, if, if. If that's the only realistic answer, then we're all going to have to work together. Um, the school committee and the school administration and the towns and to, to figure out how to. Paint the appropriate picture for, for the town residents as to what's going to happen.
Right. Okay. All right. So the next is a discussion of the buzz, budget message to the department heads. I wanted to start that conversation. Because I believe that, um. Beginning of January, the first week in January is when the department heads are to provide their budget. Um. For, for FY twenty-four. So I, I just wanted thoughts on that budget message and maybe we could write it, um. You know, get something out there, uh, to vote on. Um, at the first or at the very latest, the second meeting in November, so that we get that out to everybody. Um. So, uh. What do you guys think of that? And do you want to hear what I have? As far as bullet points kind of? Should. Yes, no, maybe?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, manager.
Go ahead. All right, all right. Um, I would like, I think we're looking at no more than a two percent increase. For, uh, things like salary and any other budget line items. I would like if there is a professional services line in the budget. I would like, um, some idea of what those professionals, what the anticipated professional services are. And what their expenses. Um, this is especially in terms of facilities where we did, um. You know, cut some things there last year. If there is a, um, if you have a contract for, um. You know, mowing, what's that going to be? Or are we going to go back with how we're doing things this year? Um, if you have a contract for some service that is provided for your department. Um, what is the anticipated cost for that? Because mostly what we get is a number and no idea of what that cost is. Um. And then, when we get to June, there's a lot of spending of money just because there's money left over in the budget, which I would be. Just as guilty as anybody else of doing that. I mean, that's absolutely what you do. Um, I think we also have to look at supplies because I think right now the Board of Selectmen. From the Board of Selectmen budget, all supplies are being purchased. Um, but yet there are small supplies budgets in each department. I think we need to get a handle on supplies. You know, what, what does each department? How much copy paper do we need for town hall for the year for, you know, each of the departments for a year? Those sorts of things. So I would like that delineated. What else do I have here? Um. Uh, and no more than a two percent increase across the board. That includes salaries and pretty much everything else. That extra half percent that we have is easily going to go into, um. Utilities, I'm afraid. Um, so, that's it. If there's extra hours being requested justification for it. Um. Because I know we, there were a lot of extra hours requested, some we granted, some we didn't, some we found other ways to pay for. That's what I have to say.
Jeff. I, I just, since. Since you're opening that up, um, I'll also say that I, I do believe that with our work with the IT and separating costs, especially with cable and. Finding out more cable. Connections and payments than we knew that we had. Um, I'd really like to be able to have each department summarize, I think is what Madam Chair is saying, some of those costs. Because we are getting along some of, of what it is, but I'd like, I'd like to see some, some. Some of those costs summarized so that we know exactly what they are. Uh, because it's, it's always been a big question mark for me. And when they come out of, is it really coming out of that particular line item or is it coming out of anything else? Because I know that the Board of Selectmen is paying for, you know, we get a big bulk of paper and then everybody. Uses the paper. So we, we've got to be mindful of, of that. If we're going to share the wealth, we really need to share the wealth kind of thing. Um, I think, um. Um, some of the, the, uh, we, we have to be mindful of what's happening this year so that we can be. Better prepared for next year as far as how things are coming out of what department, are they coming out properly? Um, and the, I agree with Madam Chair, this, this, um, flea market that happens in June really needs to be cut down much more than what it was before. If, if you are not spending in your department in June, it, it should be. You know, you should take that into consideration that maybe you shouldn't be asking for that much in the following year. I mean, I understand that that's a big ask, but. It, you know, I know in my department, I had one line item and I had to cut that out because I didn't use it the year before and it was gone the next year, you know, so. I, I agree that, that, um, having that taken care of is, is important.
So. Would you mind if I said something very briefly, Madam Chair?
No, please do.
Yeah, so I, as far as the budget me- message to staff, my, my, or to the department heads. Um. I, I can echo the things that you have said. My, 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 my specific request would be. To submit a budget that, that includes all of the staff. The steps for employees that are entitled to steps for, so into their collective bargaining agreements. Um, that, um, level funds over time. Um. Um, and that, um, um. Uh. That, uh, uh, to the, to the extent. Um, reasonable, tries to level fund the other operating, your non-salary expenses. Um. Um. I would also ask that, you know, that you, you, if you're, that you not include new positions or additional hours. Um, without a specific explanation, that includes your proposed funding for that additional hours.
Mm hmm.
So, I'm, if you say, I'm going to go out and get this grant, that's going to give somebody five extra hours. Okay. We can, we can talk about that. If you've got a source of, of funding for it.
Yeah.
But if you don't have a source of funding for additional hours, then, then, then you don't get to put additional hours into the budget. Um. And that, that's our starting point. Um, and then if we get back those numbers and we have those numbers put into the system. We can take a look at where that puts us with respect to these other increases that we know are going to come. We, uh, as I said. We need to make sure that we're funding, we're, we're budgeting for our energy costs realistically. We, all right, we know, we know right now that we're going to have. A six-figure deficit in energy costs for FY twenty-three.
Mm hmm.
We knew that at the end of FY twenty-two, because the energy costs were double what. You know, what we had budgeted for in the facilities office. So we know that FY twenty-three, we're going to have that because we know that the rates are going to go up in December. Um, for FY twenty-four, we need to build in. That, I, those increases into, um, the budget, because not doing so is just negligent. So, can't just level fund energy costs. We, we, we have been told by all of our utility suppliers that those are going up significantly. Well, in some cases, twenty or thirty percent.
Right.
Um. And so, I think that is on us to make sure that we put, you know, force those. Accommodations into the budget, but I think the department head should be given the, the, kind of the, the marching orders to just do, to, to. Uh, to, to level fund your budget unless you come up with an explanation for why it's not level funded for the non-salary things.
Mm hmm.
One thing I'd like communicated, and we have, didn't see a lot of it, but I don't like any of that miscellaneous or other lines. Uh, make sure those are all removed. Most of them are removed, but I thought there were a couple that were, and then, um. Training. Uh, I know some of them are contractual, um, but I noticed that at the end, they didn't spend that much last year. Like you said, the thing, so I want to, to really look at the training budget and see if there's any opportunity to step up there.
Yeah, I, my, my caution about training is, the last couple of years have been really weird with respect to. Trainings and conferences. Lots of them are canceled. Lots of them were converted from in-person trainings to Zoom trainings that didn't cost the town. Some of those are going to remain that way, but lots of them are saying, no, we want you back in person. For these trainings. And so we just need to be careful about cutting, and I, 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 I think we just need to be cautious in town about cutting training budgets. Without knowing that the reason that they were used was COVID really the reason. I know the training and travel allowances. Were way reduced over COVID, but that may not be a realistic. Continuation going forward. But I hear what you're saying about that, the training.
I also, on the travel budget, we, because of the town vehicle that we repurposed from the water department. Um, it would be good to do a little mini-analysis on how much that got used and whether it made a difference. Because we did cut transportation costs, um, for travel in half on most of the budgets, um. Last year, and I, I'd be curious to see if that was realistic, where that fit and adjust accordingly. So.
Given the, like, because I think that, so that car was out of commission for a little while because we were waiting for the vehicle use policy.
Mm hmm.
Right.
So I think as the budget process goes on, that's a piece of information we'll have. I think right now we would probably have a great.
Right, right.
We'd look at it, but I think once we get into the spring, we'll have a much better idea of how that's, I mean, thus far, I know people who, who've signed out, it out for conferences. Where they would normally have been driving their own car and send in also, you know, a bill for it. So it, it's definitely getting used for those sorts of things in addition to the kind of the daily. Going out for a site visit type of use that it's getting as well.
Okay, thanks. So, um, maybe Eric, we can work on a, um. A statement and then the Board of Selectmen can look at it over the next two meetings with the goal of having it. Done by the end of November, by our second meeting in November. Does that sound realistic to all of you? Everybody? Okay, all right. Um. Uh, moving on to four-point-four, uh, is there a motion to approve and sign out of session all the twenty-twenty-three renewals for class one, two, and three licenses? Contingent upon the receipt of the required documentation and payment?
Make a motion that we sign out of session all two thousand twenty-three referrals for class one, two, three licenses continuing upon receipt of required documentation and payments.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? I guess all I would say is that in the packet, this list of the, um. The documents that went out for renewal. So. Anything else? All right, uh, roll call vote. Teresa.
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. Uh, four-point-five is the same, um, sort of emotion for the twenty-twenty-three renewals for the entertainment licenses.
And make a motion that we sign out of meeting all two thousand and three, two thousand twenty-three renewals. What entertaining licenses continue on the requirement documentation and payment.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Same thing is true about the listing in, in your packets.
Um, Madam Chair, is this, was it an entertainment license that we had a gentleman come to us before and he. Said he'd be never received his, uh. Let us say, and he was required payments. Remember, remember we had a gentleman come.
I, I didn't think that was a entertainment license. I think that might have been the junk dealer license.
Okay, okay.
If I'm remembering correctly, I'm not positive. I could go back through my notes, but.
I just want to make sure we remembered him. Okay. Okay, I'm also manager.
Um, the entertainment licenses, there's, there's a list in the. Um, documentation. For the meeting. There aren't that many of them. Um. And just looking at that, I think we were all good with those. So I do think it was the junk dealer that never received. And we, and then the common vittler for, um. Might have been McDonald's. Were the two that were never. Um.
Yeah, it was the metal, metal shop, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, all right, so, um. Are we ready to vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, the next one is the discussion of the Veterans Day holiday. And the day after Thanksgiving holiday with respect to union and non-union employees. So we discussed the situ- So we discussed the situation in a meeting last year. It's, it's what's um it's the way things are written in town with all the various uh contracts that we have. Some of them um people get the Veterans Day holiday as a holiday. Um, and then they also get a half day, the day before holiday, and the day after Thanksgiving. Um, I believe uh, some of the unions don't get the half day before Thanksgiving, but they do get the day after. And if you're not a union employee uh for, through the personnel policies and procedures, or if it's not spelled out in your contract, um, Veterans Day is a holiday as is Thanksgiving Day. The day that is not is the day after Thanksgiving. So if you look at the personnel policies and procedures, it states with the approval of their department supervisors, full-time employees may request to work the Veterans Day holiday when it falls on a weekday in exchange for the day after Thanksgiving holiday. So I just wanted to bring that up. And uh point that out and um hopefully uh you know, Eric Calley is on it for knowing who, who is what, when, where, and the other. Um, I, uh, and then we need to decide whether Town Hall is open or closed. Um, I think my inclination is Town Hall is closed on Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving. So then how does that fit with the other? So people might need to come in and work on a day when Town Hall is closed. So I'm just putting this out there for conversation because it has come up every year that I've been a selectman in some way, shape, or form. So. My fellow selectmen, anything you would like to add to this discussion?
What is the?
Hand it to Eric.
What is the policy on uh Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is that on?
That is a holiday.
It is a holiday.
It is.
Most companies change that with the day after Thanksgiving. Anyway.
Well, some have and some haven't. It really depends. But it is in our personnel. If you look in the personnel policies and procedures, um, and what we, we do need to update this to add Juneteenth because that is now a holiday for us as well. Um, so uh, it, it's just the day after Thanksgiving that is the the uh questionable day. Is Town Hall open or is it not? Um, are people working that day or are they not? And it depends on what union you're in, whether or not it was, it is considered a holiday. Or not in at all, if you're not in a, a union. So.
So what is the, as far as I saw it last year, the percentage of people that it affected was very small, not even a percentage. I mean, would be one or two.
Very, very, very small amount of people.
My thought is that the day after Thanksgiving is really kind of devoted to something other than town business for most people. Um, so I think that having us be closed both Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving and we allowed uh, if an individual did wanna come in and work, that they were, had the ability to do that if they wanted to. So the contracts that had, um, if, if they decided to work on Veterans Day and not work on the day after Thanksgiving, that they were afforded that ability to do so. And I think there was only one or two people that, that did, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it wasn't a, it's not a large amount of people. I'm wondering, and I think that um editing this personnel policies and procedures, it would be timely. Um, and that it might be time to add the day after Thanksgiving, but we also have contracts to be negotiated and some have that and some don't as a holiday. So this needs a look, is what it comes.
Wouldn't, didn't we have a conversation that, that this is definitely part of what we wanted to look at and, and why we wanted to make sure that all of these were, were aligned? I mean, the eh, eh, the monumental things that we have done over the past two years, Madam Chair. Um, I, I can understand how this kept on kind of falling in the, the back of the folder kind of thing. Um, but uh I, 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 I think that's a good discussion for, for the beginning of next year and when we start our, our contract negotiations um, and run them concurrently so that we, we, I, my, my thought, at least that's what we, it sounded like we wanted to get all the unions as close to on the same page as we possibly could moving forward. So one, one left foot wasn't going east and the other left foot was going west. I think it's important, and I also think that we should revise the schedule of Town Call, Town Hall official closings so that it, it kind of um, it mimics what the, uh, what the unions are. So I think us doing those all at the same time makes more sense.
I would agree.
Um, I agree. So what are we doing for this year? Are we going to declare that um? And we have to be very careful on this because it can make a difference in police and fire pay if we declare a holiday that isn't.
I, I was just gonna suggest that I, I, I think um, as Chad's mentioned, um, saying that Town Hall is closed to the public on both of those days makes sense. And that um you know, if there's collective bargaining agreement for a Town Hall employee um, has that either or language, that they can have a conversation with their supervisor about which day they want and whether or not it's reasonable for them to do work remotely on that day, or, or if they need to have access to Town Hall, they obviously have their, you know, their file that they can get in and, and get into their office and, and do work on Town Hall. But I think that's reasonable. That's a reasonable, I think, temporary measure with the goal that this be the last year that we do it this way and figure out a way to, to.
So I mean, last year. Yeah, last year it was all things stay as is, you know, um, and you do whatever um is required by your contract. Um, and that the building itself is closed, but it's open for any employee who should need to come in and work per contract or personnel policies.
So I moved that we do what we did last year.
All right. Sounds good to me. Um, everything stays as is. Do we need a vote on that?
Teresa A. Moore, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
All right, Veronica Calle, yes. It all stays as.
There we go.
All right, um, but we should and, and Eric, you'll have to keep us on track for this. Um, get, get this into a discussion after the first of the year and when we start working with contracts. Um, because I think all of our contracts are Afsmi contracts are uh, due to be negotiated before the end of the fiscal year. So.
Well, well, I'll put that on the notes for all the, the, the Afsmi contracts.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, um. Four point seven, um, I just wanted to throw this out there. Um, we um in, in a weekly meeting that Eric and I have, we had discussed the the state of the documents in the library and uh the police documents that need to be digitized. And we were wondering if we should put in a community compact pact, uh, best practice grant to apply for digitizing municipal and police records. So Eric, have, has anything happened with that or no?
No, so, but what the, the first thing that I would do is, I, I do know that Ross actually had a conversation with the company.
Yes.
About digitizing the records in the, in the library and um so I would, eh, as a preparation for applying for a community compact exists, I would reach out to that company, see if they could find, provide a quote, kind of a general quote for, for how much they would charge for that service. Doesn't mean we would go with that company, but if they provided this kind of a general idea, we'd know what to apply for to grant. And then um, uh, have them do the same with the police records. And once we have that number, then we would be able to put together, I think, a compelling grant.
So I believe that the um, Police Department may have a quote already for their, their papers. So we might be able to get that from the chief.
Okay, I could, I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, and, and I would think that if you could kind of look at what that figure is in the amount of documents that they're talking about, we might be able to just to do some quick math and, and.
Yeah, and it may very well be that they provided Ross with a quote. I'll just have to do the research. I do know that they were conversing with him about it. I just don't know if they got to the quote stage.
If we have the ability to do it, I say absolutely.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get the blessing of the entire board before, because we were only allowed two community compact best practices grant applications a year. Yeah.
Right.
So we, we've applied for one. If we apply for this one, then that's our, our second. And we're cut off from community compact best practices grant. We need, oh, well, yes, I think we should apply for two as often as they let us. Um, but I did wanna have the blessing of the Board of Selectmen before doing this because it would be our second one and, and we would, we wouldn't be able to.
Grandfather used to say the worst thing they can say is no. That's fair, so.
So do we need a vote for this or um?
I think it would be helpful to have a vote to, to, to authorize me to apply for the community complex grant.
I make a motion that we authorize Eric to apply for the compact best practice application for digitizing municipal and police records.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa A. Moore, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, um. Uh, four point eight, we need a motion to sign the warrant for the November eighth election.
Make a motion that we sign the warrant for the November eighth election.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moore, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes.
We using your stamp on all of this stuff?
I don't know if we can on the warrant, can we, Eric?
I, I don't, I think it would be better if just the two decided on the.
I'm good with that. Yeah, okay, thank you. So no, Jazz, the answer is no on that. All right, um, we have a mandatory referral from the CBA. Let me put that out. Uh, for Five Madison Avenue, this is for um an accessory apartment. And a garage to be added on to the house. Um, there is a uh I think a virtual public hearing on November second at five forty-five PM via Zoom video conference on the application of Joe Shank for the property located at Five Madison Avenue Assessors Map Thirty-One, Block Twenty-Eight, Lot Ten. Um, the applicant is requesting a special permit under section one forty-five, chapter one forty-five, section thirty-nine, accessory apartment in residential district uses allowed pursuant to uh, chapter one forty-five, sixty-five, special permits of the Townsend zoning bylaw. So uh, we have a mandatory referral form. So uh, what would we like to say on it?
Anything, Teresa?
I'm just double checking something. Trying to figure out where this is. No, I'm good.
It's off of Warren Road as far as location of the property goes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to look in the map.
It's off of Warren Road going down towards Lunenburg. And if you pull up the assessors map, pull up map thirty-one.
And what is, do we typically leave this to the zoning board? Do we just make recommendations?
Varies. It varies. Um, it depends on what we have to say. We just have to um they, they're um any questions or concerns you may have, please review the attached application. This referral is required under the Townsend zoning bylaw. Failure to make recommendations shall be deemed lack of opposition. So this is, this is the typical mandatory referral that gets sent out for um the zoning projects. Projects that deal in zoning.
Right, I'm just.
And sometimes we say it depends. Sometimes we make comments. Sometimes we say um uh, we have full faith in the, you know, ZBA or Planning Board or whomever it is. So it just varies.
Yeah, and that's usually where I stand. I'm like, I go by the decision of the ZBA. Um, but I would assume, and I don't, that's a good piece I was looking for. They, the public hearing hasn't occurred yet, right?
That's correct. It's not until November second.
They'll read our mandatory referral at the public hearing. Madam Chair, I, I have um I mean, both you and I have a very good idea on this by law because we worked very hard on it. Um, when we were on the um when we were on the planning board. Um, my, my concern is that um the letter from the Building Commissioner seems to point to that the, the building itself isn't, eh, as it considers it an outbuilding. Um, and it needs to be built in two phases, which I don't understand how that is.
I read that differently. I read it um as if the garage were not to be attached to the house, and I believe it is attached to the house, correct?
Yeah.
If it is not attached to the house, then it's considered an outbuilding and it has to be an existing outbuilding. So the way I read the letter was that if he were to build the garage separately from the house, then he would have to wait a period of time before putting the accessory apartment above. And if I remember correctly, it was ten years. The outbuilding had to be to put an accessory apartment in an outbuilding. But this is a garage bay attached to the house. And that's different. And I thought he was just pointing out the, the differences in the two. That's how I read it, but maybe.
Well, I'm concerned of the wording in it, and it, it looks to me if that is indeed the case or you're presenting it, then I don't have a problem with it. Um, but I, I, I'm this is attached to the existing structure, which the bylaw says that the accessory apartment is able to be attached to it. There is no problem with it. I agree that we had a very long discussion that lasted months in regards to outbuildings and all of that kind of stuff. Um, so um, I don't have a, a, an, uh, any issues with it other than that particular point. I think that the applicant has put everything, put in everything that they needed to do and, and provided the, the information that they needed to. So I would, you know, I'm okay with the zoning board coming up with their decision. Um, I just, if that is indeed what the meaning of that letter is.
I didn't see it. Maybe I missed it. Um, if it's a secondary apartment, wouldn't I would assume there is an additional shower bathroom or some toy. Wouldn't it also have to have a title by Book of the Wall?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it has to go through all the permitting. Yeah, definitely.
But that wouldn't be part of it.
That's a board of health.
No, that's not part of this, yeah. Um, the other um, the example that I have, and you might remember this one too, Jazz, um, is there is a house on Highland Street that was built with an accessory apartment and a garage pretty much exactly like this. Um, the question came in because they were putting a separate driveway in. This one doesn't require a separate driveway. Um, it's, it's the same drive, the existing driveway, the existing parking. And we wrote the bylaw specifically for that, with that um in it, you know, the existing driveway, the existing parking. You know, making sure it meshes. So um, if that accessory apartment was permitted on Highland Street, then it's, it's a very, it's a similar situation. I think the garage was next to the apartment as opposed to above, but it was all attached to the house.
So in that, in that respect, I trust that these only, if, if that is indeed the case of that particular letter, then I have no. then I have no problem with, you know, I trust the zoning board to make the right decision.
And I'm just saying again, because the first um one that they did check off is that it's in the occupant uh, to protection overlay, but that all would not be under the decision of the zoning board. That would be when they go for title by, right?
Right, it's what what.
Or conservation.
Conservation, yeah. My my thought is they probably had open conversations in regards to that before they even did the application. Most of them do. It's outside the jurisdiction of Z B A.
Right.
Right. So uh, our comment is um, uh, God bless the C B A. No, I'm kidding. Um, you know, we trust the the C B A to uh, review the decision. Or the um, application. Is that, or, you know, go forth and do your work.
Or we can say no comment.
Uh, we could say.
Like you just say, and we trust the Z B A, right? I ensure that they follow, you know, conservation and and all.
Yeah, that they follow the other permitting process. Yeah, I agree.
I'd like.
So if you want to write it, why don't you write it?
Okay.
Do we have the form?
Um, the form should be in the folder that Sabrina put together. I have a form here, but it won't help. Um.
It's a little bit too far away, so it'd be.
It is.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just zip one out to Indiana and pick that one up.
Send a howler.
Yeah, right? Okay. Oh, I I I think I heard what the board said. I will write it up while you guys discuss the next one. How about?
Yeah, okay, all right.
Efficient use of times.
Thank you. All right, the the next one is a C B A referral for one sixty-one Brookline Street. And I believe this is the property with the storage units and the um, the uh, um, little cabins. And it's changing hands. Um, so this is uh, oh, yeah, this is virtual public hearing is tomorrow, October nineteenth at five forty-five P M via Zoom video conference. On the application of Brendan Kavanaugh and Addison Newt for the property located at one sixty-one Brookline Road. Assessors map thirty-eight, block nine lot one. The applicant is requesting a special permit under chapter one forty-five, section twenty-nine C four outline commercial district uses allowed pursuant to um, chapter one forty-five sixty-five special permits of the Townsend zoning by law. And so the applicant is requesting a special permit to operate a storage facility. And I believe this was an existing special permit and the property is changing hands.
That's how I read it. So we have no comment? Just leave it to the Z B A?
Yep, I agree.
All right, same situation there, Eric. So and um.
That one's no comment.
That was a no comment.
No comment. Yeah, no comment and um, signa- signature wise, how do we handle that?
I think Jazz can, Jazz is the vice chair.
Yes, so he can sign.
Her absence.
Well, I can use her stamp. Is that what you're saying?
No, no. All right, so yeah, Jazz will sign as um, the vice chair. So the next one is a consideration of surplus property, the library. This is four point X point eleven, four point eleven. Um. So those were the wooden chairs that they would like to surplus. And I believe everything is there. Once we approve it, um, they can um, determine together with Eric and uh, Sabrina, the Board of Selectment Office, how to uh, dispose or sell or whatever they're gonna do with the property. So is there a vote to for the um, or a motion to um, surplus the chairs at the library?
One second.
Did you make the motion, Teresa?
Uh, I'm holding it up. Good.
No, it's not sideways.
I had a new computer and I can't find my way around it, yeah.
She um, she accidentally hit the setting, so it was on portrait as opposed to landscape, so we were all doing this.
The chairs on their sides.
You ever tried to do a mouse when it's going the wrong way? Not easy at all. Okay, so. We're signing things as we're doing that, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
I'm just gonna sign them.
Okay, what do we have?
Madam Chair, I believe there's a question from a member of the public.
Um, are we taking questions at this point?
I just wanted to let you know that there was a handout from the member of the public.
Okay, thank you.
So what are we looking for a motion on the chairs? So, yeah, so I made a motion that we allow for the consideration of surplus property upon the library.
Second.
Um, specifically, it's how many wooden chairs?
Eight. There are six Windsor style wooden chairs, year acquired two thousand nine. Um, and two other wooden style chairs. Also acquired in two thousand nine with a seat has been split.
Um, did we get a value on those?
Three dollars each for the good ones and ten dollars for the split seats.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Jazz Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, moving on to four twelve. The consideration of the um, license request for um, selling the Lions Club selling um, Christmas trees on the common.
I make a motion that we allow the license club um, the grant to be licensed club, the request to for a license to sell Christmas trees on the town.
My second.
Um, and the the all the selling dates are in there. It's from November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two to December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
And after six o'clock, if they throw a tree at you and if you catch it, it's free.
Yeah. Are they really?
No. It's a wonderful life.
I'm thinking.
Did we get the signature? Um, did we get the signature that we needed on this for the corporate office there?
We have a signature from the corporate officer on the application.
Okay, thank you. The, when I printed this, we hadn't had that yet, so I just wanted to check. All right, um, so we have a motion on the floor for the um, the Lions Club request to sell a license to sell Christmas trees uh, from November twenty-fifth through December twenty-fourth. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Jazz Sexton Duranian.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So. Um, all right, moving on. Um, the mandatory referral from the planning board on age restricted housing. So um, we have this, this is for a public hearing on Monday, um, October twenty-fourth at six forty-five P M. Um. It, for the following proposed amendment to the Townsend zoning by law. And um, I guess I have a general question before we um, discuss this. It's a, again, this is a mandatory referral. Um, I I'm looking at these zoning by law changes. And again, this is a discussion that I had with Eric, and we've talked about this in several meetings. Instead of piecemealing changes to the zoning bylaws, should we be doing an overall review? Um, instead of making changes one at a time. Um, I I guess it's more of a philosophical than anything else. And on this one, Laurie, if you are um, uh, you know.
She's got her hand up.
I know she has her hand up, but I want people to be live on the meeting. To, in other words, um, to ask a question. Thank you, Laurie. I'm not gonna be doing things during the meeting. Public comment is a little different, but everywhere else. Yeah, thank you.
I think it'd be public comment as well, so, um, but that's my opinion. Uh, I, we served on planning together. So you understand what we went through um, for even just to get to this one here on the um, well, we went through the accessory apartment and now the age restricted. And I know that housing is looking at bylaws to present to for multifamily housing. And I think it's, it's like bylaws. You can change them every year. You tweak them every year. It's almost impossible to go through all of the bylaws and have even even the ones that are just related to housing, because it's affected by so many other um, departments. So I I hate to put a halt to not making changes each year. Because you need to have some growth, you need to have some expansion in the um, in the housing. And it just seems like it does, it it just doesn't take off. And we have no economic base. We do not have a growth base so that we can collect more taxes. Um, we're only hurting ourselves i- if this doesn't um, continue to be adjusted. Thank you.
All right, so now it's open for the um, for the board. But that that was just what I'm throwing out there. I mean, we have this, we do have an age restricted development bylaw. We do have that in place. Um. You know, um, by striking basic, you know, we're.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would it be okay if I spoke very briefly?
Sure.
Um, so I I I think that I I agree with both you and the Chair of the Planning Board, which is I do think that that, you know, after a certain period of time with the existing zoning by law, it's important that you um, make um, uh, make plans to have it reviewed in its entirety. And and quite frankly, that needs to be done by an out- outside consultant. That's not something that should be done by, you know, internal town staff by themselves or by the planning board by themselves. That involves us finding a funding source to hire someone to come in and review our entire zoning by law and present an updated by law. At the same time, I think that the Chair of the Planning Board is correct. Right now, we're living with this current by law, and it's important to to keep seeing it as a kind of a growing document until such time as we have taken the steps to 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 uh, re- review and um, and, you know, refresh it in its entirety. One of the kind of dangers of that, and I've actually seen it in other towns, is they go through that process and present a new by law to town meeting and town meeting rejects it. And if you've spent that whole year or two without having someone like the planning board reviewing the existing by law and making the tweaks that they think are appropriate, you're kind of wasting two years of possible tweaks in the hopes that the a larger change will will pass. And so I do think that we should, I do think it's important that we do what you suggested, which is make plans to have an entire, an entire fresh look at the zoning by law, have the entire thing reviewed. But at the same time, I think it's also important that the board kind of review what the planning board has done and see if this this kind of intermediate step, this intermediate change is a positive thing that you, the board thinks for the town to make a determination on how they respond to this, this um, uh, mandatory referral. So I I, if I may.
Yeah, I think at this point, Laurie, it's gonna be just the Board of Selectmen here, because this is a mandatory referral. So thank you. Go ahead, Jazz.
Um, I believe that, you know, the the documents, um, especially the bylaws are living documents, that they're gonna be constantly changed anyway. But I firmly believe in in the uh, the boards and committees that we do have, their expertise is is important. And if they feel that this is something that needs to be brought forward, um, I would be, um, I would have to uh, agree with with what they're saying. Um, and if I had any personal things, I would bring it to the to the um, public hearing. But as far as what they're asking for, um, I I would say that, you know, let let the public speak for itself in the public hearing and you know, uh, this is what they're they're asking to have changed, and I have full faith in the planning board to 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 move it forward, so. You know, I agree that in the future, but I don't think we're there right now for this. And if this is gonna help, um, if this by law is gonna help us expand our economic base, I think, uh, you know, well, let's just move forward and see what we can do.
Well, I I have one concern on this, and it's uh, number four, which allows the planning board to waive anything that's in the by law. Um, and so I'm I'm wondering why we are putting stipulations in anyway. If that's the case. Um, it says the planning board may, in its reasonable discretion, reduce, alter, or waive any or all of the foregoing basic requirements upon demonstration by an applicant of just cause for such a reduction, alteration, or waiver. And um, I I would not at all support anything like that. Um, being placed in a um, uh, I mean, why do we have any basic requirements then? We'll just make them up as we go along. And so you can.
Is this presented to town council?
That was my question.
Um, yeah, I I don't know. So um, I I guess the the comment then would be, was this submitted to town council? What were town council's recommendations? I know when we did this by law, town council went through it with a pretty fine tooth comb. If I remember right, it it was put on, pulled back, and then put on again on a meeting um, based on council recommendations. And I I just have a, so Laurie, was it, was this reviewed?
Yeah.
It was.
Adam wrote the by law.
I know Adam wrote the by law. Did he review these changes?
He he's, yes, yes. Be, everything was reviewed before the, we were gonna go to a public hearing. Everything's been reviewed by him.
So what we're looking at here, these changes to the by law.
Have already been through Adam.
Yeah, through Adam, okay.
And this, the what you just read, that's a typical language in other parts of the bylaws. That the planning board has to prove the purview to waive any and all of the following if the applicant shows whatever cause. It's throughout the bylaws. It's not just to this one.
Okay.
So just just for clarification.
Yep, thank you.
So what do you want to um, have on this one?
Um, I think no comment, and then we can each make our own um, personal comments.
Okay.
Because. Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'll just say for the record, like, like Ashley said, yeah. I think we're working really hard, and I know the planning board is working really hard to stay current and get uh, you know, the town market factors, so I support. uh, you know, the town market factor. So I support them on this letter. Ecuador.
All right, the last one is, um, four fourteen, the discussion of the Townsend VFW application to the Lottery Commission for a keynote license. Um, we have twenty-one days from the date of that letter. Uh, and Eric, you might be better to, I, I guess, uh, if, if we are to object, um, it's can only be as a result of an official action taken by said city or town regarding the keynote applicant. And I, I guess the question, I, I had a question about that. Um, we have twenty-one days and there's a method for doing this, to send a letter back to them if we are, concerned about the granting of the license.
May I ask a question?
What, do you want to make a motion first and then discuss it? I don't know. I don't, I'm just.
I, well, I have a lot of questions about this too. And I, I guess, I think on this one, we should discuss because the, it's whether or not we're going to send a, a letter back. So I don't know, Eric, you can guide. Should we make a, a motion?
I think you're correct, Madam Chair. This, this may not require a motion at all. You may not have anything to do. So, um, we should probably have a discussion and decide what the board's action would be.
Okay. Go ahead, Teresa.
Uh, I, I'm just going to say, I know that currently the VFW, they recently received their alcohol license and they're, um, still working to, uh, promote customers, uh, coming in. Uh, they have bartenders working strictly on a uh, volunteer basis until they build up. Uh, merchants get to know that the place is open again and, and clients start coming back. I do know that this will help the VFW, help them gain, um, some income coming back in. Um, so for that reason, um, I would support this.
So Chaz, do you have comments?
Um, no, I, I have a couple of questions, actually. Didn't, didn't they have a keynote in there before? Yeah, uh, when they had their license before, they had keynote in there. And were, were there any discrepancies when they had their license, their keynote in there before in regards to any um, actions from the state or anything like that?
None that I know of, but that, you know, that's none that I know of.
I, I guess my question in relation to that is then if they had a keynote license before, the fact that they lost their liquor license shouldn't have caused them to lose their keynote license. So what happened there? Do we even know? So Eric, now I'll hand it to you because I saw your, your hand up.
So I was just gonna, I was just gonna kind of briefly explain the process that the board would have to go through.
Okay.
If the board believes that they have issues, questions, concerns a- about the issuance of this keynote license, what the board would require to do is as the licensing authority for the town, we would have to schedule a public hearing for the VFW to discuss this license, the, the potential keynote license. At which they must be given a chance to appear and, and discuss it in front of the License Commission. At the, the Board of Selectmen operating as the licensing authority for Townsend. And only after that hearing would the Board of Selectmen be authorized to submit a letter in objection to the State Lottery Commission.
Uh, if we do approve it ahead of time, if we have a majority vote today, that's not required.
Well, yeah, so I think in the absence of the board voting to hold a hearing, the board doesn't have any authority to send a letter to the, to, we can't, we can't object.
Correct.
So it's either we do nothing and they, they proceed along as though we've done nothing, or the board votes to hold a hearing. And after that hearing, and only after that hearing, at which they've been given an opportunity to show up and kind of present their case to the board, would we be allowed to submit a letter to the state license commissions saying that this, this town objects?
So then did we have to already schedule the hearing? Because it says if you object to these agents receiving a monitor, you must do so in writing within twenty-one days of receipt of this letter, which is roughly the, you know, first Thursday in November.
Right, so the, 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 um, it's the seventh. So we would, we would have to, before the seventh, have a public hearing at which they were allowed to appear and have a defense. So we could do that on the first. If the board, if that's the wish of the body, we schedule a public hearing to have the VFW come in to discuss concerns that the board has about this keynote license. We'd have it on the first, but at the end of that, if the board has a wish to submit a letter, then we could do it because you've met the statutory requirements of having a hearing where they could come and defend themselves. And that would still be within the, the twenty-one days from the seventeenth.
Okay.
So it's, it is close, but it is still possible for us to, to schedule that public hearing on the first. Give them notice and then if you continue to, if a majority of the board voted that they had an objection at the end of that hearing, you could vote to send a letter to the, to the state licensing commission, objecting to the, to the issuance of the license.
So the, the vote tonight would be whether or not we were, were going to move forward with the public hearing.
If the board wished to do anything, that would be the vote you would have to take tonight, would be the vote.
Um, my, my, there were a lot with the liquor license, there were a lot of neighbor complaints. Um, I don't know that having keynote makes any difference. I mean, it's the people that are members of the VFW and their guests and it's just um, something within the building. It's not out on the streets. So it's not going to cause more people to appear at the VFW who would anyway, I don't believe. But I don't know.
It certainly appeared to have a less impact than the alcohol license. The alcohol license, in theory, could have an impact on the exterior of the structure and on the neighboring properties where a keynote license
Wouldn't.
Wouldn't have any impact on the exterior of the structure or the neighboring properties unless, you know.
Unless, in a positive way, because there is income that you make from selling keynote.
Right, and there could be a substantial amount at some point if they do hit big numbers.
But I can't imagine any negative impact. So I see no reason to have a hearing.
So Chaz, how about you?
I see no reason to have a hearing either.
Okay, I, I would agree with that. Then, um, then no letter goes at all.
Then you don't have to take any action. We, we can just move on to the next item.
And we don't need to vote on that, I guess.
Correct. We would only need to vote if you wanted to have a public hearing. Otherwise, this is just for informational purposes. The board's taking it up and the determination of hearing isn't appropriate. And so there's no need to do anything else.
All right. Uh, that's it for meeting business then. Uh, moving on to the work session. Um, ARPA projects. Um, I think those have all been, um, the ones that have been defined have been sent to the appropriate people. And we'll meet on November first to make sure all the accounting is in place and anything that's been uh, spent is in the right category. Correct? I think it's November first, might be the third. I, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so.
May I ask a question in regards to that, to ARPA and an ARPA project? The checks that came in for the, um, opioid settlement?
Yes.
Did we get that straight? No?
No. Um, I just, I, I just need to meet with Laurie and figure out how we're going to get, we have the checks.
Yeah.
How we get that to N M cares.
Procedurally.
Procedurally. And so it's not a, it's not a matter, I, we understand where it's supposed to go and I understand that the, the will of the town was to have N M cares get that money. I just need to figure out how we mechanically, if there's an account that we need to put it into and make a deposit and then issue a, a, a check to N M cares and how that kind of works. Or can we just scat on the bag, go for deposit only and then cares and hand in the checks? I don't think that's the way we should do it.
Right, I agree.
Uh, but yeah, so it's just the mechanics and I, you know, we're, we're gonna, we'll, we'll sort that out. That's my, that's on me. Sabrina has been very good about reminding me that I need to figure out how to do that.
But and those are not ARPA funds, so.
That's not ARPA. That, those are the opioid supplement.
Right, right.
But they're going to one of our.
Right.
Folks.
All right. All right, at this point, it's a town administrator update and reports.
Yeah, so I, I believe, uh, I, I let folks know, but I wanted to make it very official. The town did receive the Community Compact Grant for, uh, the financial services, the, the, the budgeting software. Um, we have entered into a contract with ClearGov. There was a kickoff meeting earlier today. Um, we're going to providing them with, uh, data from the last four budget years for them to load into the program. Laurie, uh, who is our, uh, from Melanson, who's our town accountant, has actually worked with ClearGov and other good, and other, um, Minas Pali's. So she's got some experience with that interface with them and provide them the appropriate information.
And is somebody from the, uh, finance board being in part of these initial reviews with Vivian?
Um, uh, we provided an update to the FinCom when, that we were going to apply for it. But I think at this point in time, it's all just weird. It's all just getting the data. We haven't gotten into, into anything. Um, we're going to have a, a call next week to, after they've had a chance to, to look at our raw data. And once we can get it up and running, then I'm obviously going to have to meet with both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom to kind of explain to them how everybody can get trained on their roles, which is going to be the ability to view those, the, the budget process through the, um, online portal. Um, and I think that'll be kind of, well, that's once the data is populated and we start. Right now, there's not a lot of them seen. Uh, let me see, but that's a, moving along well, so we should have that ready to go by the time we, um, are expecting, uh, our, department heads to start inputting their information. They'll be inputting it into ClearGov.
Good.
So ClearGov has our dates and they understand that, you know, we're going to be, um, uh, within the next month, giving out the information to the department heads. And by that time, they expect to have the data repopulated into the system. And we'll obviously have to do department head trainings on how they work it, but it's relatively, I mean, it's not one hundred percent self-explanatory, but it's pretty close. When you've got a, you've got a, a list of, of lines and, um, so hopefully that'll be a, a kind of a relatively smooth transition and we'll, we'll work.
And how much was that grant for?
It's worth twenty-one thousand dollars. So that includes the onboarding costs and our first, uh, annual subscription. Uh, we are, um, uh, working with Pepperell and Ashby to, um, try and, uh, fill the veteran service agent position. Um, I met with the, the Pepperell Town Administrator today. He has two candidates. Um, one that he interviewed today and one that he's going to interview tomorrow. He's going to pass the information to me. Um, and he thinks that they, they both might, might work out and will just be a matter of, of, uh, the town's determining. If we want to stick with one person, which I think makes sense, kind of for the region, um, uh, we'll have to decide which person we think that is, is the best fit for the towns. But it looks like if, if one of these two people works out, we should have someone on sooner rather than later. In the interim, um, the veteran service agent for Air and Shirley and several other towns uh, has, i- is actually volunteering his time to, to do the veteran service agent work here in Townsend at no cost to the town. Um, and so we've known with him a couple of times and he is, uh, working with the, um, uh, with Lee and Laurie down in accounting to make sure that the October payments get out as quickly as possible because they have been delayed unfortunately, um, a little bit. Uh, so we'll get out those October payments and hopefully, you know, by, by the time the December payments need to be done, we'll have a, a permanent solution in place.
Great.
Um, the, um, the other thing that we have been discussing, uh, as I, I've been discussing with both, um, Andrew, William and Trin Pepperell and with Christine from, who's the town administrator in, in Ashby, is looking to see if it makes sense to do some more regionalization of operations. Um, and, and there, there's some things that I need to do a little bit more, uh, evaluation of, but for instance, right now, Melanson uh, is our town accountant. Um, Melance is also the town accountant for Ashby. Together, the two towns pay a lot of money to Melanson to do accounting services for both towns. My preference would be to have a full-time town accountant in Townsend. I'm not sure that we can afford it, given what our budget is. And I need to, I, I think, I, I need to, you know, come up with a plan, but to, there may need to be a conversation with the Board of Selectmen about maybe instead of a full-time town accountant, we have a three-day-a-week town accountant. And that person works two days a week, week in Ashby. And we split the cost to provide ourselves some savings. Along with the fact that the person would just be right down the street on the days that they aren't here and available for, you know, emergencies. That might be the kind of thing that would, would work. And I need to, you know, I need to talk to, right now, we're, we're operating on a, with a town accountant one day a week. And she does do work when she's not in on that particular day. But three days a week of full-time accounting services. Um, uh, I know that, um, for instance, I was talking to the, the, um, the, uh, to the town administrator and Pepperell, the town administrator in Air, and they're paying between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for their accounting service, for their town accountants. But if we split a hundred and, even if it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars between the two towns, it would cost us less than is in our budget now. And we might be able to get three days services. And if that's enough, that would be the question. I am not ready to ask the board to take that up. I think I need to do some more work on it. But it's just one of the things that I think I'm, uh, I'm going to be looking at. Um, we've got like the grant writer job that is, we're not getting any kind of traction on at its current asking salary. Um, and there may be some opportunities to take a look at some um, local services that we're providing and seeing if we can regionalize them. Can we regionalize anything about housing? Can we regionalize anything about, you know, grant writing or, um, project management?
Any, any consideration for fire and police?
Uh, that, so honestly, that feels a little bit like a third rail. Cause I know that they were, they, and I would expect to get a lot of pushback if we told the town that we're gonna, i- i- if you told a town that they're not going to have a local fire department, it's going to be a regional fire department. But I think that that's something that we should actually look at.
Um, yeah, I'm just curious of Ashby.
Yeah, I, so I hadn't gotten to that point yet. I do need to say, I, I think it's incumbent upon the town to sit down with Ashby and probably with Pepperell and maybe some other towns surrounding and see if there are opportunities for us to be able to regionalize some of our services. Because if we can either improve our level of service for the same cost we have now, or provide the same level of service for less, we will be, you know, helping out the taxpayers in Townsend by doing that. So these are investigations that I'm going to have. And obviously, because we're going into the budget season, it's something, you know, I'm looking for potentially to, to, to ask the board to maybe think about for our next, for our next annual budget. Um, some of these are going to be, um, not realistic and that's okay. And some of them may be realistic, things that we can do to provide regional services. And in a close geographic, close enough geographic proximity that it really is just down the street that, that, you know, these people are coming. And I, I think there's opportunities in our.
It's a great idea.
You know, opportunities in our building department for the, not for our building committee. You know, opportunities in our building department for the, not for our building commissioner, but for the other, you know, inspectors. To have them work at a regional level, there's opportunities for us to, so like I said, maybe do it for accounting, maybe do it for grant writing, and maybe do it for project management. Um I I I maybe for some land use. I think we have enough capacity in town to support a full-time land use. Person. I think that might prove that there's definitely that capacity. But for maybe to provide some additional services in our land use department, we don't clearly provide, but specifically thinking about planning. You know, getting a, you know, a a planner, and anyway, that's. I just wanted to let the board know that I'm kind of gonna start having those investigations and conversations, and I will come back with the board. Uh if if any of them, I think, reached the point where they 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 kind of need a a an official. Ruling as to whether we wanna kind of move forward in a, in a, with something like that.
That sounds great.
And that would be it for me for for this week.
All right. Um any reports from Board Liaison?
So I have a report from the Conservation Committee. So um. Uh they had a a meeting, uh and it was regarding the um. Well, the Veterans Club that we had discussed for the uh Townsend resident, uh who is the. Uh first person killed in, I think it was World War One, or was it World War, World War One, but it was actually. Um before America was officially in the war, so we fought under a Canadian citizenship. Bill citizenship, so before, under the Canadian flag. Uh two of the places that they're thinking of putting the monument um. Uh acceptable, uh but two of the places that they are considering the monument. Or that we've considered for the monument, uh fall in the Historic District. Uh one of them was the Town Center, so not only is it the Historic District, but it also falls under Cox and Recreation. So if either of those are choices, uh they wanna proceed with those two choices. Then they're going to have to uh. Uh get permission from uh the Historic Committee. So we, I just needed to let everybody know that that's what happened.
So how did the Conservation Commission fit in?
I'm sorry, I guess the Conservation, I said historic, historic.
Oh, it's the Historic District Commission, okay.
So. I'm sorry, just a report.
Okay. Uh elected boards, anything? I think you already did the report on the North Middle Sex.
That was a big one. Um. Uh I I'm also working with the um the Water Department. Um they are looking to do a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. To the work that they've been doing this year, basically uh. Uh what they did during the summertime, the projects that we had talked about previous. They wanna catch the board up on on all of the um the things, the Greeley Road Project, all of those kinds of things, so that we're aware of what's going on. They also wanted to give a progress report on where they're at with um the other facility, uh the new facility that's that's being built.
Do you have a date?
Um I. I tried calling one of the commissioners beforehand, and I I think it's premature for to to say November first. So I I'm thinking maybe earmarking the following meeting we have after that.
November eighteen. Fifteen. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I do have, I did wanna do a a little um, a plug for the um on a trail if I can.
The. Already happened, right? Did that happen?
I think it happened. Boy, did it happen. Um the um. The figures are in. Um we served probably over a thousand individuals for that day. From this year admissions, um they were eight thousand four hundred and six dollars. Um they all, we all, they also received money for mugs, popcorn, water, stickers. And then paid everything out, so it looks like um they split between the Friends of the Library and the VFW Auxiliary. Um the VFW Auxiliary got three thousand nine hundred forty dollars and twenty cents, and the Friends of the Townsend Public Library. Received three thousand nine hundred forty dollars and nineteen cents. Um I want to personally thank everybody that worked there. If anybody looks at the Haunted um Haunted Trail Book. Uh there is a picture of the, just the people who were participants there. Um there was a lot of people involved, um and the line was from the front of the library all the way up to the school at one point. I mean, it was just, it was packed, and it was really, it was really a lot of fun. Um they are looking to maybe do two days next year um to accommodate the the size, and then that way we can uh. Um there's a lot of problem solving that we need to do, because it was. Uh I as a, as a tour guide, I went through that thing more times than I really wanted to, um double the amount of times that I really wanted to. But the last time I walked through it was just as exciting as the first, because the people in town were were very happy with with what went on, and. I just wanna thank everybody, and they did collect canned goods for the T E O, so everything worked out really well. And that's all I got for that. Thank you.
Okay, great. I don't have any public safety to uh report. Um announcements and communications, um we've already done the hearing, the twenty-fourth for um. The uh age-restricted. Doctor David Giannino in Lunenburg is doing a haunted office on October twenty-eighth. Let me see, uh new conflict of interest training is available. So Teresa and Chaz, take a look at that. I've put that on the. Agenda for the beginning of November, because we have until like November sixth to respond to what we're gonna do for that. Um and our uh PC Brookline, New Hampshire, they're doing their um Hazard Mitigation Plan. And uh even though it's not Townsend or even Massachusetts, it's um. Adjacent to us, so if you're interested, look at their plan online. W W W dot Nashua A R P C underscore org slash Brookline hazmat. Is what I believe it is. Um, all right, let me see, what's my next? Uh Elise Johnson has resigned her position at the library because she became the um. Assistant Director Program Coordinator at Council on Aging. The zoning bylaw, that was Article twenty-six of the. Special Town Meeting was approved. This had to do with uh. What can, what is allowed in residential districts, having to do with. I think that on this one, it was the uh allowing the groomer, dog grooming.
Yes.
Um, okay, wellness grant, the highway applied for an M I I A health benefits wellness grant. And um to create uh. Let me see, a multi-purpose room at the, a more cohesive multi-purpose room at the Highway Department. So um I think there will be um more coming on that to see whether or not they receive it. And um what was the last one I had? The outdoor lighting decision of the C B A is also in the packet. So that was just a statement of the decision um. And uh. That is available in the Planning Board Office. So I I think that's it. I have a Conservation Commission legal notice. Um there will be a public hearing this week, uh next week, Wednesday, October twenty-sixth at approximately seven ten P M. Uh it will be held virtually via Zoom on a notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission by. Jane Potts said, the property is located at twenty-two Sana Row Road. The proposed project is the replacement of a subsurface sewage disposal system. Part of the construction will take place within a hundred feet of Vinton Pond, so anybody that's interested. In speaking in supportive or in an opposition, uh may do so by attending the hearing or in writing. To the Conservation Commission prior to the hearing. And that is all I have there. Does anybody else have anything else? Um we said trick-or-treating, I think that's up on the website. We did that last meeting. Um yeah, our next meeting is November first at um six P M. And uh is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session?
Make a motion that we review and sign payroll and bill payable warrants out of session?
Second that.
All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Say a motion, yes.
Chaz Exonurian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn at eight. Eight oh one, yeah.
Second that.
All right, um Teresa, how do you vote?
Say a motion, yes.
Chaz Exonurian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. And with that, thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of the week and good night.